Good afternoon, everyone. I call the meeting of the February 25th, 2020 Board of Finance to order. We have our special guest as always, Madam Treasurer Beers. Welcome. How are you?
I'm fine, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Good afternoon, committee. How are you?
We're going to go ahead and approve the minutes, and then we'll get to you and Ken. So, our last Board of Finance meeting was on November 11th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
All right, a second?
Second.
Second and a first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, Madam Treasurer, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I do want to say we had a change on the agenda, and that was the Public Trust report had incorrect date on it. So, we've replaced that with handouts that you have at your desk. And then, we also have the new, what is the jump drive thing?
Yes.
For the present, the thing. It's highly technical there. Yes, the thing, to be able to project the correct ones on the screen as well. Otherwise, I am set to go. So, the first thing up is the property tax collections. So, again, as you look, you have your three years of tax collections there, 2017, 18, and 19, and the amount that was charged, collected, and uncollected. So, 2019 looks a little bit pale. But remember, we have the asterisk there to remind you that we had our delayed tax bill due to the state legislature and House Bill 407 that had that delayed property tax collection for this year. So, these are numbers, again, I'll remind you, from quarter ending December 31st of 2019. I will tell you the update as of January 31st, after our first half collection ended, So, we did very well, very comparable to a regular first half collection. When you look at the amount that we've collected by year, because of course, we have 10 years on the books, you can see the collection rate there. Again, at the very end, 2019 looks very anemic because it was ending December 31st, and we only had collected about 24%. Again, with collectings that went through January, we were able to boost that to 57%, which is very comparable, as we looked at last year for 2018. We were at 56% after the first half. So, all the numbers are looking really good, even though we had that delay. You know, we just have wonderful, wonderful citizens in Burnalee County and property tax owners that do pay their obligations and pay it well and on time. We appreciate that. The next page starts your bank balances and collateral, and I'll turn that over to Deputy Treasurer Ken Scott.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Thank you, Board and Vice Chair. So, again, I'm going to start with the bank balances and collateral slide. And this is an executive summary of the bank balances at a snapshot in time, so as of December 31st, 2019. I'm not sure if you're aware, but banks must pledge at least 50% collateral to the county when they have certain balances. And as you can see, with Wells Fargo, at that time, we had $18 million, but we had $17 million pledged collateral. Bank of the West, we actually didn't have any pledged collateral because all of that is federally insured. And then, with Bank of America, those are our repurchase agreements. And per the agreement, they actually have to pledge 107% collateral, which is why it's a little higher than the usual 50%. The other thing I want to note is the Bank of Albuquerque. That's our lockbox. So, again, during this time, we were collecting property tax payments. And as usual, they have to pledge collateral for those deposits. And we actually was, we were over-collateralized at that time as well, at 5.7. But again, that's because it's a snapshot in time.
I want to tell you, I love this new report. This is great. This is simple, easy to read, concise. Like it.
Good deal.
Thank you.
And the thing is, I also think it's one of the more important slides, right? Because it goes directly to our safety principle that we really hold to here at the county. Thank you. For the next slide, that's our operating portfolio breakdown. And again, that's the three bucket strategy. The first bucket, of course, is the 15% operating budget. And securities in that bucket has to mature within 30 days. Then, we have the liquidity ladder, which is a ladder that, securities that mature each month. 60 million must mature within a year. And then, finally, we have the core portfolio, which is actively managed by Public Trust. And that is our 3/12 plus 5% requirement. To go over the summary, so, the first thing to note here is, again, this is a snapshot in time. And as Madam Treasurer mentioned, this was our, one of our high collection periods. So, you're going to notice that we have a lot of liquidity in December. So, 122 million in the money market account, 60 million in the LGIP, and 74 million in Bank of the West ICS. As of today, we actually have 175 million total in the entire highly liquidated account, which is still a little over liquid, and I'm going to talk about that in a second, as well as 135 million in the liquidity ladder. I will say that we made 190K during a short-term investment. So, what we do is, when we have those high property tax collections, we do a short-term security so that we can lock in those rates, and we made 190K. You're not going to see that on this report, because that was in the end of December, but that will be reflected in the next quarterly report. Again, for the next slide, this is the core portfolio. Again, this is actively managed by Public Trust. I'm not going to steal Sheila's thunder. I'll let her handle that one. But that is actively managed. Then, we have the bond proceeds portfolio. Now, this one is managed to a draw schedule. So, finance, specifically Tim, we work with a lot of the different project managers to see exactly what they need and when. And we buy securities that match that project drawdown. So, still rolling on as usual. And then, finally, what I always say is my favorite slide, which is the net investment income by quarter. As you can see by the slide, we made 2.1 million in the second quarter, which is essentially flat from the same period of last year, fiscal year 2019, and a decrease of 8% over the first quarter. Now, why is that? That is due primarily to the declining rate environment that we are in. As you probably are aware, we've had three rate cuts in 2019. So, one thing that I would say that this should lend to is that we, at some point, need to start pushing out some of that liquidity so we can lock in rates. Because, just as you guys are probably aware from today, it's been a kind of rough past few days in the market, unless you were buying the VIX. Other than that, you probably lost quite a bit. So, I think that what this sort of lends to is that we need to start thinking about pushing some money out so that we can lock in those rates. Before I turn it over to Public Trust, are there any questions?
Thank you, Kenny, Madam Treasurer. Chair and members of the commission. I'm Sheila Duffy. I'm a director with Public Trust Advisors, and we have been your investment advisors since 2014. So, I will go through, I'm here with my colleague Ash Maida, who's vice president in our company, also in the Investment Advisory Services Division, and has been with us six months now. So, he's traveling around and trailing, you know, seeing how we treat our clients and learning and so forth. So, thank you for having us and the time. Kenny covered a lot of, you know, kind of where we are now. So, I'll talk more about strategy initiatives and things like that. So, I'm going to start with these very outdated numbers that Kenny pretty much already went over. These are from December 31st. As he said, on January 15th, there was about $160 million of tax collections that were, are held for 30 days and then distributed to other taxing entities. So, those were put to work. We made 1.46% yield on that and $190-plus thousand. So, those matured on February 18th and were distributed to other taxing authorities on the 20th. So, that worked out very well. You know, the theme here is that no one can predict interest rates. Last time I was here, we were talking about how last December, they were, you know, predicted to go up three times. Now, they've gone down three times. We are, as a firm, expecting one more cut this year. But after the last couple of days, might be more than that. Who knows? Today, we looked at the rates. The 10-year Treasury is yielding 1.36%. It's like an all-time low. And the 2-year is at 1.24%. So, the yield curve is incredibly flat. There's nowhere to go to find yield. As far as, you know, a lot of times, as money managers, what are our two big levers that we have to add value to any portfolio? One is duration, and the other one is sector diversification. So, you, duration, it's a flat and sometimes inverted these days. Yield curve, we've had some inversion, slight inversion lately. So, you know, going out on the curve, if you think rates are still going to fall, as Kenny said, then yes, you probably want to lock in before that happens. And then, the value, of course, of your portfolio will rise as interest rates fall. And then, the other, sector diversification, you had policy changes. Bless you. You had policy changes last summer that allow for investment in commercial paper and supra-national paper. That would count as sector diversification. There is ability to pick up yield with that lever at this point, but we aren't there because the procedures have not been approved yet. So, we haven't been able to actually implement that change to date. I'm going to skip over this because it's just so outdated and just talk about the three bucket strategy. So, again, you know, there's $77 million per policy requirement. 15% of the budget has to be, has to mature 30 days and less. So, that equates to $77 million. As Kenny said, we have in that bucket $175 million as of today, I guess? As of today. So, really over liquid. You have a lot of capacity to move funds out into the core portfolio if you choose to do so and lock in rates if you think they're going to continue to go down. So, that's the bucket number one. Bucket number two is liquidity ladder, which we do manage. This is really managed to the operating needs of the county to cash flows. So, it's a smooth ladder of $5 million maturing every month so that the county knows they always have this liquidity. It's dependable liquidity coming in. So, there's, it's really just a ladder that keeps getting built on as we move forward. And then, the bucket number three is the core portfolio. So, these are funds that were, you know, took several meetings to define exactly how much money would go into this bucket, how much everyone was very comfortable with, that wouldn't be spent, wouldn't be needed for day-to-day operations of the county, so that we could, we get quarterly authorization to actively manage this bucket. Now, that said, we haven't actively managed this bucket since January. So, remember, when I started these comments, we were talking about last December, and everybody thought rates were going up three times. And they turned around, and it pivoted in January, and they started going down. That puts your portfolio in a position, and the yield curve inverted. So, that put your portfolio in a position where we couldn't do swap trades without realizing losses. And the county has no tolerance for that. So, we stopped trading. We have not traded in this portfolio, other than reinvesting maturities since January. So, what we're trying to do, this is the other, this is our second strategy initiative and recommendation from our firm, is to change the benchmark on that portfolio to a zero-to-five-year benchmark. So, a benchmark, let me just take a moment to explain. It's an index. So, we use Bank of America Merrill Lynch indices, Treasury Agency index of one to three years. So, we're following what their index, their bucket, basically, is doing. So, anytime, if you're Bank of America Merrill Lynch, anytime a security falls less to 11 months, you know, anything less than one year, it's automatically sold. There are no questions asked. They don't care about losses or gains. It's automatically sold and reinvested into the timeframe of one to three years. So, if we don't have the ability to do that, we can't track that benchmark. And it's, it becomes kind of ineffective. So, what you want to do is choose a benchmark that you're comfortable following and using as, you know, a proxy for your performance in any rate environment, in any market circumstances. So, we came in, our chief investment officer came last October and made a whole presentation on what's an appropriate benchmark for the county. And what we came up with is zero to five years. So, if you don't want to sell, you're still within the benchmark all the way down to time zero. That is on the table as a recommendation. Again, we have to get procedures, some of the paperwork and logistics behind the scenes, up to date and agreed upon before we can actually implement that. But I think that everyone agrees that that's a good benchmark for the county.
So, Sheila, I mean, can we approve that? And just with the caveat that obviously, you get the procedures to sort of catch up to it? Because I think, you know, in terms of where we're at right now, looking at the yield curve, I mean, it's sort of silly, three to five right now, considering what you just told us about two versus 10? In terms of, it's sort of a no-brainer, in my opinion.
I'm not going to speak to policy.
Madam Treasurer, thoughts?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Yes, that was going to be the ask at this meeting.
Perfect.
So, you're, as usual, always ahead of us.
Oh, that was Commissioner O'Malley. I give her credit. She brought it, she leaned over, and I said, yeah. So, yeah, anyway, I'll wait till you ask.
We're going to, we're going to do that. So, thank you for being ahead of the curve.
All right, thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Thanks, Sheila.
So, I'm not sure where we go procedurally, if there's a vote that's needed or anything. So, I'll defer to our, by an elected official here to give me guidance on that. I'll just finish my report first. So, then, this is just the three bucket strategy. Instead of described in words, it's just taught in a chart. The highly liquid, as I said before, 77 million per policy is required this year. It changes every year, depending on the budget. The current position as of 12/31 was 261 million because, but that was because of tax collections. So, that's really an aberration. But it is 175 million as of today, and talking about possibly moving some of that out to the core. The liquidity ladder has stayed stable at about 135 million, and the core has stayed stable at about 109 million. But last quarter, we all agreed that we would take the target amount up to 140 million. So, that kind of gives you room. This is where you have room to say, oh, yes, you know, you have $30 million more that you could move in here and still be within this target. Or you could suggest that we change the target again. That's also an option. So, that's kind of our playbook right there. These are just longer descriptions of what's actually happened, happening in the liquidity and core portfolios. So, we, basically, this just says that we comply with everything that you want. So, $60 million has to mature within 12 months. We have met that hurdle. Per the Investment Working Group, and looking at the cash flows of the county and the liquidity needs every day, the Investment Working Group suggests, so this is not in policy or procedure, but it's a suggestion by the group that's looking at this on a monthly basis, that $5 million mature per month. We've also met that. The rest is about the fact that we have an updated policy, and so you've already heard that. So, I won't take too much of your time. That's an old picture of the yield curves right now. Pretty much, everything is looking more downward sloping. And on to the core portfolio. Again, I've pretty much gone through all of these. Our chief investment officer was here on October 17th and made a lengthy presentation on his recommendation for changing the benchmark. So, here we are. And I think, at this point, we've discussed it many times in the Investment Working Group meeting and so forth. And I think everyone's pretty much on the same page as far as zero to five is a good benchmark for the county. This shows the fact that, since we have not traded all year, that you are underperforming. And that speaks to some of what Kenny was talking about, underperformance. So, once we get that fixed, we can get going. This is a 10-year historic look at actively, what an actively managed portfolio would yield. So, really, this is just an illustration going left to right. These are longer-duration portfolios. There's also a little bit of mixing in corporates and mixing in treasuries and agencies and so forth and so on. But basically, the gist of this chart, and it is historic-looking chart, is to show that over, you know, in history, and history is not a guarantee of future performance, but in history, a longer-duration portfolio outperforms. And the numbers within the columns, so there's 11 quarters in that, in five years, that the zero-to-five-year, the one we're recommending, which is right there in the middle, it yielded over the last 10 years 1.5%. It had 11 negative quarters. So, that, that's a measure of the risk. So, of five years' worth of quarters, 11 of them were negative. But as you manage over time, you have a higher yield overall. And so, this is why you only do this in a core portfolio where you don't need the money and that you have the time to earn over time. You don't want to have this, use this kind of strategy on something where you're taking out money for operating and so forth. So, that is, that concludes the operating funds portfolios. If there are any, if there are no questions, I'll go on to the bond proceeds, which is extremely brief because it never changes. So, you have projects, you have cash flow, you have draw schedules. We meet every month as the Investment Working Group. We look at what money is needed to pay the contractors, and then, we invest the rest out per, really, what the finance and treasury department tell us they're going to need. So, this is, it's not a smooth ladder. It's more kind of directed by what's happening with the projects. And that's been going really, really well for, since we, since we started doing that. So, with that, I'll stand for questions.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, Sheila, that was what got us in trouble was this, in the first place, was having this, as you said, you know, if you can wait for the long term and you can, you know, weather that whole period. You didn't need the cash.
Right.
But that's what happened with us the last time, was that we did need the cash. And so, we got into trouble.
So, yes, Mr. Chair, Member O'Malley, you're absolutely right. And I'll tell you the difference between then and now. The biggest difference was that all of your money was in one portfolio, and the duration on that portfolio was 8.2 years. So, you were out 15 years with money that you needed to pay bills next week.
Yeah.
That's what, that's not the case. Now, we have a small portion of all of your funds out, making, you know, a little bit better yield where possible. But you also have two other buckets of money. One that has to mature within 30 days, it's $175 million. And the liquidity ladder has over $200 million, or $200 million in it. So, you have, ever since that happened in 2013, you have been really overly liquid. For a couple of years, we were all in bank deposits, if all of you recall that, those of you who are here. So, it's taken a long time to really map out reasonable strategies, understand the liquidity. We meet every single month to understand the cash needs of the county. And then, you know, after all of that research and homework, you can say, well, here's $100 million of, you know, the county's money that is, we know doesn't, isn't needed day-to-day because it's in reserve accounts or things, you know, where you're required per statute, or I don't know if it's the administrative code or statute, but that you're required to keep this money on hand. So, we know that it can work for you while you're having it sit there for you. Does that make sense? Do you have questions?
Well, no. I mean, I, I mean, that's one of the, well, obviously, policies came out of that.
Right.
That sort of crisis, if you will. And so, it makes sense to do that. And now, of course, we want to take advantage of, you know, the interest rates and start to, again, start to get some of our investment back. So, it makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Others?
Commissioner Colley, did you, are you?
I need a couple of.
Sure. Hi, I'm new here.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
So, a lot of this stuff just, you know, but I've got to say, on the handout, page 15, one of the juxtapositions of statements that I liked on that was the sentence at the top, "This portfolio strategy remains the same quarter to quarter." And then, the second thing there just kind of says the same thing. We just have this nice ladder, and it's working nicely. And then, the third one says, "The working group actively discusses flows." Yeah. What's there to talk about?
Mr. Chair, Member Colley.
I'm sorry, it's just.
No, there's, there's a lot to talk about. So, this is where the finance department and the treasury department and Public Trust Advisors comes together every single month on the second Monday of the month and discusses, you know, the cash flows, the cash needs of projects. So, these are bond proceeds.
Right.
That are being managed. So, as you know, as everyone in the world, I think, knows, you know, a construction project never goes as planned.
Really?
So, we meet every month to see what the cash balances are and, you know, adjust and know what we can invest back out or what, what we need to hold in cash to pay the vendors.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, we do, in addition to that, what we do also is Tim will meet, go out and meet with like Elias and sit down and look at project by project and understand what the delays are and make those adjustments. And then, we bring it to the bigger group, and then, we further discuss it. So, we were, we spend a lot of time because what we were finding is that people were counting encumbrances, saying, "I'm going to pay." But really, it's about cash out the door and understanding what that is and knowing, because that then gives us what we have to keep. So, we instituted another process that we just sit down one-on-one and talk through your projects and say, "Is there any delays?" Well, we have, we're wording on this contract. You know, we're held up because the city of Albuquerque is overlooking at our permitting plans and different things like that. And so, then, we make adjustments as we go along, and then, we continue to work through that. So, we're really trying to understand what's driving so that we can put more further out. But we know historically, on average, we ladder about $5 million a month. That seems to be a fairly decent, consistent spending pattern. On some months, it goes higher, and we try to make those adjustments as well. And so, we keep ourselves, we spend a lot of time talking and working it out together. So, and trying to understand things, so.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Colley. We, we do talk quite a bit, and that's good. It's not cheap talk, because we're talking about millions of dollars. But, you know, I still bring it down to your household budget. You know, sometimes, we had money, and we wanted to go out and buy some property, and it just didn't work out. So, now, we have to do something with that money. Makes our books look over liquid, but what do we do with it? So, we bring it back every month to the group to say, you know, what makes sense? What should we do? What does, what does the market look like? And go from there. So, it is a changing environment. So it, it is a changing environment, and that's, that's just the nature of having an urban county that does a lot of great work for its citizens. We've been very busy the past two to three years, and that's a great thing. And all the moving pieces behind the scenes really do take a lot of time, a lot of deliberation, and a lot of thought, and we're very happy to do that. The group is very cohesive, and we just, you know, it's, it's just what has to be done, it's definitely the right thing, the most transparent thing to do. Since you are a new commissioner, we would be glad to have you come and see that, because it's one thing to talk about it, it's another to see it, and, and see how the moving pieces come together. You know, there's people over here behind me on my, on my right that attend those meetings, they're probably shaking their heads, I don't know, I have to turn and look, yeah, and, and see all of those, how those pieces come together. It is unique, maybe not unique to counties, because I think most every county does it, whether you're big or small, but it, but it is fun to see, so I'll invite you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. I, I'm reassured that this smooth running of things, quarter to quarter, and maturities coming into play on a monthly basis, gives the illusion of great stability and non-concern, and it's all supported by very active people making it work, and that's clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I do want to make one quick comment, I appreciate Commissioner O'Malley bringing up, you know, the pain of the past. One thing to note real quick, if you were to just take the operating funds three-bucket strategy and talk about the average prior to the collapse of eight years plus, right now, we have 75 percent of our money available in 12 months or less, so we are in a much, much better position to react quickly if necessary. So of the 400 million plus, we have roughly 310 million ready to go, and that's with the 175 that we are now versus the 261 at the end of December. So I think we have some opportunity, as per Commissioner O'Malley as well, and all of you, to take a look and say, okay, let's make sure we got everything covered, let's make sure we got a little extra, but then let's also get back to business of, you know, making sure we're all comfortable with where everything's at, so that's a, that's a huge opportunity and great job, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have the last slide in the agenda packet, which is other office news that we're going to go through. Just, just to kind of tell you how talkative we really are, and all the things we do.
It's back in the first presentation.
Are we there?
Yeah.
The first bullet there really encapsulates almost a year's worth of work, of really looking at our custodial bank fraud controls. And, of course, our custodial bank is Wells Fargo, and we really had to dissect what all those sub-bank accounts were, and what kinds of controls and access were on each one of those accounts. It was pretty daunting, because I will tell you, there's, there's more than just a checking or a savings account. I think, Ryan, Ryan's here, my treasury supervisor, I want to say there was something like 70 to 90 accounts. Eighty-seven, I was close, that's pretty good for, for me. So eighty-seven accounts that really had to be picked apart, and seen historically what they paid, how often, what was that access and control. So going through each one of those was, was a labor of love for Ryan and his staff. So in that, you can see, we closed 20 inactive bank accounts. So that's always good when you're talking about cleanup, it's always good to always close accounts that have old treasurer's names on them, and we did find some of those, and old commissioners and clerks, they were like, noo, they're not here anymore. So it was a real nice effort to clean up all of those, and of course, we did it because of fraud, and because of cybersecurity, because that's, that's critical to our office, and handling all those accounts. So that, that is a concluded project of ours, and, and hands go out, claps and hands go out to Ryan and, and the treasury department there. The other one is, I've, we've talked again about the investment policy that was updated in September of 19, and now translating and continuing that work to procedures to capture those changes, and we hope to have that done, and probably to you by the March commission meeting. We don't have another Board of Finance meeting, but we certainly want to meet our six-month deadline, and, and we'll come back to you with those. Lastly, was the delayed property tax bill, you heard some of that already in the beginning. I will say, in December, we collected 174 million, but the bulk was collected in January of 243 million. So we, we had the total of that $417 million that we collected by January 31st of this year. I do also want to say that we did take advantage of some things that were in the county, and those were filling some radio and TV spots. So I had a lot of people always say they saw me like at 5:30 in the morning on Fox TV, and I was like, what is that? So when I called up, so folks are like, Nancy, remember, you filled in those spots? I went, oh, yeah, yeah. So we did that because we really weren't sure, this has never happened before to have delayed tax billing. So we'd rather be safe than sorry, so we did spend $14,000 on, on additional radio and TV spots. The last two things that, that aren't on here, that, that we've talked about, one is the investment strategy, and approving on that core, the strategy of the benchmark from going from the one to three, to the zero to five years on that, for the core operating funds. And the last one is, because it's the beginning of a new calendar year, a board member from the Board of Finance to serve on the Advisory Investment Committee for me. I don't know how you want to handle that, Mr. Chair, but those are the two remaining open items.
So I was alerted that, and I would ask, it's, because it's in this part of the agenda, does this count now, Mr. Counselor, or do we need to possibly, well, I'll let you answer, and then I'll make my next comment.
Yeah, thank you, we have no action items published for this agenda, so if we would like to take an action item, we'd have to go through the Open Meetings Act complication requirements.
So what I'm thinking we may do, because the next meeting for Board of Finance isn't until May, is maybe if we could do a special meeting, we'll do it telephonically, that way commissioners can participate, if we can do that, since we passed that law, that ordinance, that we can do it that way, do it before May 26th, publish it, get it out there, we'll pick the date or whatever that works for everybody, and that way, we can approve these things prior to waiting another two and a half, three months, get it going sooner, so I think I would make that recommendation, and we'll look to get that set up if that works.
Yes, sir.
Excellent, so we'll look to do that between here and before May 26th, for sure. Even if it's May 25th, we're one day quicker, okay? We'll do it sooner. Any other questions from anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we were, we followed last year's procedures, and so we, we weren't aware that there was a change, that we should make it an action item, so I apologize for not, not knowing that and being.
I don't think it's a bad thing, I think we can fix it, it's easy, we can, yeah.
It was, it was an agenda item, just like it is on the agenda here for the selection of the board member. Okay, it wasn't last year either, so that's why there was confusion on my part.
Okay.
We'll do a special meeting.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll figure that out, get that done before then, and we'll also have a person for you by May 26th, for sure.
For sure.
All right, no other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, the next Board of Finance meeting will be Tuesday, May 26th, that's the official meeting, we'll probably pull a special meeting telephonically before then, at 4 o'clock, if there's no other business, this one's adjourned, and we'll have the administrative meeting at 5. Thank you all very much.